Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Call?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Mayor Heinitz?
Here.
Taking something off, Mayor?
Yes, we're going to take, under administration, item number three.
Item number three, Encore Park Railroad Permit is deleted. We have that revision. With the revision, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have the minutes from the March 3 briefing meeting and the March 7 regular meeting on pages four and four through 10. I don't know if there's any questions, corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the two previous meetings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 11 and 12, we have the claims listed.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion to approve the claims as listed on the pages 11 and 12. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent calendar, Brian?
Just four plats.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any questions anyone might have? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point in time, we have allotted time for any public comment. Just a reminder, if there is anyone, that we do limit you to five minutes. We ask you to approach the podium, turn the microphone on, and speak to the subject. Okay? Moving on, old business thing. Golf course, seasonal staff.
You've got some additional seasonal staff hires in your packet for community, bussler, lounge, bar, timber, and maintenance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the seasonal staff. I was mentioning to Barb that I was listening to the news and Sioux Falls had filled all of their lifeguard positions with, starting at $16 an hour. They said a year, year and a half ago, they were $10.50, so quite a change. So, all those in favor of approval of the seasonal staff, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rebid of the retaining wall, scheduled to rebid. Questions on that?
If you remember, this is a project that we did bid earlier this year, and we only received one bid, and it was almost, well, it was double what the engineer's estimate was. So, we did reject that. So, we changed the plans a little bit to make a few items a little bit more clear, and then we also adjusted the timeframe of the completion dates of when it needed to be finished, too. We would like to re-advertise this on March 30 and the 6th, and then bid it on April 14.
Tammy, what other changes did you guys make?
The bid that we received had a lot of shoring involved in it, and they really don't need to do some of that, and so we just added in some details to explain some of that.
What were they going to do for shoring? Dirt pile or something?
Well, we tried to leave that up to the contractor on how to build it. So, there were question-
Would you pay the design developer?
So, they designed the actual wall. How it's constructed and their timeline on when to do it is up to the contractor.
Would the stability of the wall be part of the contract?
Well, it's only, it's only during construction, the shoring part of it.
Do we need a motion on that, or no? No? Okay.
Okay. I do have a quick question, Tammy, with the golf course, the parking lot, and the project with the regulator or whatever it is that we're putting in. I guess I'd be a little concerned. I mean, I just drove by yesterday morning and the church and some golfers probably already early. It's, I don't know, is there hope that we would? I guess I'm thinking if we have a 200-group outing, we won't have parking.
There'll certainly be times where they're going to take part in that parking lot. We hope that this contractor will be out of there, and that dirt pile will be removed because their construction's done. So, they just need some cleanup items here once the ground thaws, and they'll get a lot of that removed.
Where's all that dirt going? Is that?
It's up to the contractor. It's theirs. So, they waste it.
But you think that will be out of there within the next month?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
I saw some writers on the course today. That was good to see.
That's your first outing? Showing something, oh?
Yeah. Okay. Parks and Rec, the work report is there on page 25. Art project at Veterans Memorial.
I handed out an email from the middle school art teacher. They would like to do some clay poppies at the Brandon Memorial at McCarty Park, and then also down here at the VFW for the Loyalty Day Parade. They do have permission. Our question was, do they have permission from the VFW to put those by the memorial? And they do, so.
I need Christina's help for a second.
Jeff, put your mic up.
I just need her help.
Oh.
So, is there anything we need to do there?
Yeah, you need to authorize-
Okay.
-the clay poppies to be placed in the park.
I'll make that motion. Second.
The motion and a second to approve the art project at Veterans Memorial. Any other questions anyone has?
Are they, sorry. Are they, if I read this correctly, then they're going to pick them up then, too? They're not keeping them there?
Correct.
Oh. They could stay, I mean-
They could.
You just don't know how they would weather, probably.
Yeah, we don't know how they'd weather, and we'd have more than 16 weeks.
Okay. The motion and a second to approve the art project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
26.
Motion carries. Brandon Wellness requests for support.
So, this is a group that's been formed within the community, working to put together Brandon Community Wellness Center, and they just came to Park Board asking for our support at this point. As they get farther in their discussions, they will come and make a report to city council, but it's all volunteer effort, spending a lot of time. They've formed a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and are collecting some donations for various drawings, that sort of thing. So, Park Board is in support of supporting them.
Yeah, I know they've been working quite hard. I've actually attended one of the meetings, and it seemed to be quite energetic in terms of trying to get this put together. It's being led by John Semchinco, pastor at Celebrate. So, we need to, do we need to make a motion to-
Yeah, they're asking for a motion of support from the city. There's, in our conversations with them, no financial support has been offered, potentially a location in Aspen Park if things get rolling, but no financial support at this point in time. So, just a support, a motion of support.
I would make that motion. Second.
The motion and a second to approve the support for the Brandon Wellness request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tallgrass Park Place Structure Bid.
Finally, a fun bid. It's not sewer and water and street. It's fun stuff.
It's a play. Yes.
Yeah. Excuse me. We had $250,000 budgeted to redo the playground at Tallgrass Park. This bid came in at $270 and change. We did get a grant from the Brandon Community Foundation for 10, and then I do have plenty left over in my equipment budget to cover the balance, so. So, I'd like to move forward with this rendering as it is, with your guys' support.
Devin, a quick question. Two weeks ago, we had another, what the heck was that? And you said leftover money from the equipment budget you could use. Do you foresee any new equipment that's not on your budget? Do you see any possibility of something popping up?
No. Hopefully, no. Everything's in-
I mean, that's always a crapshoot.
Right. No, our equipment's sitting pretty well. I got really good prices on everything this year. We had budgeted, I didn't account for a trade-in on one item, and we did trade-ins, so we're sitting very well. So, even if we had a small piece of equipment go down, I think we would still cover it if we had to. But no, our equipment's all sitting in pretty good shape.
Okay. Very good.
So, I would make a motion to approve that request.
I'll say it.
A motion and a second to approve the Tallgrass Park Place Structure Bid. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mayor, I would like to thank the Brandon Community Foundation for that $10,000 grant. That really helped put us over the top, so that was very much appreciated.
That's great. And right on cue, we have a wage adjustment for Mr. Coughlin.
I'm just going to skip over that. I'll make a motion for that, Devin, okay?
Second.
I'll meet you across the street later.
Yeah, that's great. We have a motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Devin. Coughlin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 32, the Fire Department Report. It's listed. See the calls. And Public Safety, also, we have a wage adjustment for Tyler Sarda.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Officer Sarda. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The 2021 City of Brandon Annual Report.
Exciting part. South Dakota law does require me to present an annual financial report to you. We do have until May, however. I tried to get it done and get the auditors in here at the end of April, so before they get busy with school audits. So, if you're following along, if you're in your paper audit on page 5, otherwise it's 41 in the packet, kind of just hit some highlights. Total revenues, we came in the governmental funds at $9.8 million. And the next page, total governmental funds for debt service, we paid out $1.5 million. And for capital outlay projects, we paid out $6.6 million. Total expenditures came in at $13.4 million. Obviously, we bonded for some of those capital projects, so we didn't necessarily lose money, but overall, of all the governmental projects, our net change in fund balances increased by $919,000. You will see the general fund there increased at $610,000. I'll go over the general fund a little bit later, and then those are the ending fund balances for those different funds. General fund is at 8.9, however, we do have a restricted amount in there of $442,000 for a bond, so it's really more about eight and a half million. On page 10 or page 46, this is the proprietary funds, which would be your water, sewer, golf course, and the streetlight fund. For the first time in five years, the operating income is actually a positive for the golf course, so that is nice to see. I really look at the operating income line item there, about halfway in there for the water, sewer, golf course, and streetlight. They were all a positive, as well as the income loss before contribution. They were all on the positive as well with the proprietary funds at about 2.7 or 2.2 million increased.
Christina, this is probably a dumb question. Is the golf course now that payments are done?
Yeah, so the large one for the building is done. They do have some small equipment ones and some lease ones, but yeah, the large building one is completely done.
And what was that payment?
It was about $150,000 a year.
That's good.
Yep. On page 12 or page 48 of the packet, this is just the general fund, so it kind of goes over the budget amounts versus the final budget amount and then the actual amounts. So, as you can see, we budgeted $7.1 million in revenues, but our actual revenue was $8.3 million, a large part into sales tax. That came in at $4.1 million, which was about $950,000 more than what we budgeted. Licensing and permits, we sold an on-sale liquor license this year, and then our building permits were increased by quite a bit this year. And then, yeah?
What did we sell that license for? I can't remember.
It's $6 per thousand, so it's 66 something. Yeah.
$11,000.
Yeah. No, the on-sale liquor was 66, yeah. The Bing franchises always never know what that's coming in at, so obviously that came in really good this year, about $60,000 more than budgeted. We had a good year on the pool, the culture and rec came in at $165,000 in revenue, so that's about $67,000 more than what we budgeted. So, overall, revenue came in at good.
Christina, do you think that the sales tax is still tied to all the building? What's your thought on that?
When I looked at all the categories last year, a lot of it was tied to building. So, you know, obviously, our building permits were double. A lot of that was tied to, when I looked at the categories, it was lumber. Our fuel is up, so it's fuel, because if, you know, fuel prices increase, that sales tax number coming back to us increases.
Can you tell if they're forgetting much from, I know it's hard to tell, that internet sales stuff?
Yep. They do have a report now. That didn't start until October 20, so I didn't have a full year to compare to that, but this year, we will have a full year to compare to that, so that does contribute to some of that.
Is that sales taxes where it's ordered from or where it's delivered to?
Where it's delivered to.
Okay, so if we order it and have it delivered here, we get the sales tax?
Correct. Yep.
I didn't think there was sales tax on gas.
It is. It's built into the dollar. It's built into it. On page 13, or the next page, total expenditures came in at $7.6 million. If you look at our original budget at 7.7, that was really close to our original budget. The final budget was 8.4, made some different budget adjustments in there for, like the pool improvements kind of went into 21, and different things went into 21, but we really came in close to our original budget. So, the net change in the general fund was at $610,000, and so our ending fund balance is 8.9. Just keep it in mind, we have that restricted amount in there, so it's really at about 8.5. And we do have future projects that we plan to use that fund balance for, and we'll go over more during CIP. Page 16 or page 52 of your packet, this is our long-term debt. This is general fund, long-term debt only. For some reason, the annual report only requires the general fund. As you can see, we added $4.1 million this year in general fund, ending our general fund, or our debt at the end of the year at a little over $19 million. So, we have $19.4 million in debt in the general fund.
And what's our factor of how much we can have for debt? Our debt capacity?
5% of your taxable value. Enterprise long-term debt, just so you know, is a little over $9 million. So, between the two, we have 28, 28 and a half million in debt. And then the last two pages is what will be published after it gets approved tonight. But if you have any additional questions, just let me know. I can certainly go over anything with you.
So, how far are we off of our maximum debt capacity, quite a bit yet?
About half.
About half?
Yeah, or a little over half.
Okay, so we have some, we got some wiggle room.
Yeah. And our property tax value went up quite a bit last year, so that adds to that, too.
But, you know, I think that's a really important factor for residents to know that we just can't borrow like crazy. There are limits, and we have to be very cognizant of those limits when we're looking at projects. They see that the sales tax revenue goes up, well, there's other factors involved, too.
Yeah, there's about three different things I look at. So, I just need a motion to approve when you're ready.
Tell me.
A motion and a second to approve the 2021 annual report. Are there any other questions anyone has? Well done, Christina. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for getting that done so quick. Good job.
It's a lot of line items.
Yeah. Lot of numbers.
Glad you know where they all go.
Yeah.
Okay. Encore Park Development Agreement on page 55.
This is the development agreement with Hag LLC regarding Tiff District Number 7. It's the nuts and bolts of the operating of the Tiff District. Just saying that they are going to build certain public improvements, amounting to about eight and a half million in Tiff eligible costs, and that the city will, over the course of potentially up to 20 years, reimburse those tax increments to the developer as they come in.
And this doesn't cost us anything?
No, there's no cost to the city, like we've talked about with the Tiff District before. The developer's up fronting the cost. They're, I call them a pay-as-you-go Tiff District, where they incur the debt at a private bank, and then typically, the Tiff is pledged against the note at the bank. There's no risk to the city. If we had sold the bonds and the development didn't proceed, we would have to come up with the debt, or the money to pay the debt. This way, the developer does. So, whatever the county brings to us or sends to us as an increment, we just turn around and rebate back to the developer until the debt is paid, until the grant, I should say, is paid. So, this does not constitute debt limit or go against our debt limit, and it is an annual appropriation from the city to the developer, so it has to be approved in the budget each year.
Okay.
And there any motion?
We need a motion to approve this.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Encore Park Development Agreement. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request to amend Chapter 232, on-sale or off-sale licenses, distance from school or church.
Yep. Julie's on the phone, so.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep. So, go ahead, Julie.
Hold on one second here. Hello?
Yep, we hear you.
Hi, yes, so we are requesting a change to the applicable ordinance so that would be allowed on church property during our market hours. This way, we can keep well-prepared winery as a vendor of ours. Currently, we're at 515 North Split Rock, and with the new businesses moving in there, we're worried about parking. We also have to limit the number of vendors we have there. The Faith United Church has approached us, and they have a very large parking lot and space to expand the market and the vendors.
So, right now, city ordinances prohibit the selling of alcohol, or a license holder be within 300 feet of an entrance to a school or church. So, since it would be in Faith United's parking lot, it's certainly within the 300-foot distance. So, in order to allow that to happen, the city council would need to amend the current regulations in Chapter 232 in some fashion.
So, that would mean anybody could sell liquor with it, not just, I mean, this is an isolated case, I understand, but theoretically, open it?
We would only want it during our scheduled market hours.
Is this something where we could build in a, an exception for if a property, a church, signs off on that? You know, leave the ordinance in place, but make an exception for if a church signs off on it and it doesn't affect any other nearby churches?
Well, you need to change the ordinance, but you could potentially draft for such a circumstance. So, we can't just leave the ordinance as is. We'd have to amend, yeah.
Amend the ordinance to allow for, in a case like this, where a church signs off on it, and they say, yes, we are good with that, that would make that exception for that 300-foot. Otherwise, leave the 300-foot in place for-
I will look to make sure it doesn't violate, make sure it doesn't violate the statute.
Yep.
Because it doesn't, I think we have a majority control.
Is there a way to make it similar to what we do with permits? Like when somebody wants to have alcohol in a park, where it's kind of case by case?
They would have to come in in front of the city council anyway to get their permit approved, the vendor. So, it would be in front of the city council anyway.
But that sort of makes sense to me, that on a case by case, they could come in and request a permit for a particular event, similar to what Dana is saying.
So, if, okay, let's say we, if you change the ordinance, which I'm not in favor of, but if we changed it to allow these permits, but then the people that are selling it, they still need a right to do off-sell, is that correct? So, you can't have somebody just selling cans of beer out of a ca, you know what I'm saying, though, that you just can't do something like that?
No.
I just think changing the ordinance, though, would open up a whole can of worms that I just don't want to. Farmers market, I think, of fruits and vegetables, not people.
Well, these vendors who have alcohol licenses, they-
No?
Yeah, Victoria does have alcohol license. Yeah, Victoria does have alcohol licenses.
Yeah, the wine, the wine vendor, Prairie Berry, is it?
Wild Prairie, they have a license through the state because they're not in city limits, so they do have a license.
Wouldn't they have to be licensed, if they're selling in town here, wouldn't they have to be licensed in town here?
Right, so they fill out a form for a one-day permit, which she has already done, but I wanted her, was holding off until this discussion is had. And she does, fills out an application for a one-day permit for the days that she's going to have sell the alcohol there.
And I'm kind of with Vicki here. It seems like we're opening up possibilities that down the line a ways that we're not going to be too pleased with. Because we allow this, I can't think of a circumstance that could occur, but that's the kind of, this is the kind of thing that if we allow this for these people, we end up, down the road a piece, we end up having to do something similar for somebody else. That possibility is solidly there. And so I guess I'm not in favor of doing something like this.
I certainly understand not changing the ordinance. I would not favor that, but I think you're talking about one day. It's not like it's going to be every day. It would be one day, so I could see a permit. No different than if they went to, you know, we give one-day permits to go to parks or wherever. We have, in Tammy, your group asked for a one-day permit. So I, I mean, I can see that side of it a little bit. I certainly would not change the ordinance. I would be against that.
We've issued permits, but not necessarily to sell, but to consume.
Oh, is, so this would be selling, not consuming?
Yeah, she sells it.
Yeah.
And are we talking, we're talking about malt beverage and wine? We're not talking about hard liquor?
Correct. So we don't, the ordinance doesn't differentiate, it just says all.
Okay.
Liquor licenses must be 300 feet from an entrance to a church.
So Lisa, do you see doing a day permit, assuming it's five months? So you're probably 20, 20, 25 times, it would, she'd have to get 20, 25 day permits. Do you see that as putting our ordinance in question?
I still think you have to change the ordinance to allow it and then go ahead and permit it per day. And you could have limitations of just beer and wine and not hard alcohol. So you could permit the process and then just make sure you apply it non-discriminatorily with the different religions, churches. I think you can do it, it's just a matter of whether you want to or not.
Sure.
So what, what we're looking for, staff is looking for is just some direction from the council if you want us to take the time and effort to draft an amendment to the code that would, that we could put in front of you for a first reading. If you don't want us to do that, then let us know now. We won't, we won't take the time and effort to do it.
I would say no, they can violate the liquor store or Sunshine.
So I put a tentative timeline in there. If you do want us to draft something, we'd be looking at a first reading on April 4th, if we can get one drafted, and then second reading on the 18th. It wouldn't become effective until the middle of May at the earliest. And then, you know, could be delayed.
Yeah.
By discussion, you know, or if we come up with something that you don't like, et cetera.
So what's the issues?
I understand, but we do have our current spot for now. So I mean, if not anything urgent, we just want to have it set up in case we have to move up there.
What's the feelings, counsel?
Well, you know, we wrote the ordinance to protect the churches from having alcohol sold by them and the church is the one requesting to have alcohol sold at it, so.
At they or is it?
Well, they would have to get the permission of the church before the farmers market showed up. Would I, would you, would you agree with that?
Yes, and the session had approved her to sell wine at our winter market. So November through April, we were actually having a market in the church and they had approved her to have a sale in the church. But then we found out the city ordinance was to allow it.
They didn't do it. So the church approved it.
The church approved it, the city did not.
But they didn't, they didn't do it.
Well, one church can't speak for all churches.
No.
But if you know this church wants it, doesn't mean.
But if you make a.
That's why they have to sign off.
Right, and if you have a one-day exemption, then yes, that church would, it would protect all the rest of the churches. It would be this church that's saying, yes, you can sell the wine that you make with the grapes that you grow outside of town in our church parking lot. I don't see a problem with it, but.
They not sell this wine and businesses here in town?
No.
They don't go to Sunshine or the liquor store, they don't sell?
I don't, I'm sure the president is. So Tim, are you?
I believe she does sell at Sunshine.
I mean, understanding that we would have to change the, amend the ordinance, you still feel that we should move forward with it, okay?
It's changing.
Hmm?
Ask why.
So it's changing the ordinance to make, for allotment or whatever, right? We're not changing the wholesale ordinance.
Right, I understand that.
The only change we're putting in the ordinance is to allow for us to do this, if I understand correctly, yeah?
Okay. So are you making a motion, Tim?
Is there?
I don't need a motion, I just need direction.
A direction?
Do you deny the request for direct staff to develop and draft the ordinance?
Two say yes, two say no.
So we're talking one vendor out of how many? How many vendors do you normally have, Julie, or are you anticipating?
I have about 20 right now, but the market is growing and I've had a lot of interest from other vendors as well.
Do you want to vote? One way or the other, I will. I will make a motion that we move ahead with having the ordinance drafted for future consideration. I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to request staff to amend Chapter 232.
Well, yeah, so a couple of things. I guess if, if the church is okay with it, that's one thing. However, we always have tried to have a policy where we don't jump and change things just because of one request. And so I'm a little hesitant because of that. Because it, as we know from P and Z experiences, it just creates, can create problems down the road. So I'm, I'm, I'm really torn on this one way or the other. I guess I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other.
Other questions, comments?
I think the value of this, have it drafted. If there's other things that come up in the meantime, that can be addressed at that time with that vote. This does not necessarily mean that this is going to go ahead. This, this just puts us down the road so that we can consider the ordinance change.
I appreciate your time.
So we have a motion and a second to draft language on the amending. At this point in time, I would, unless there's other questions, we will vote.
Roll call, Clark?
May.
David?
May.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
3-3. Mayor?
I would vote aye.
What we'll do is we'll start drafting an ordinance. I say, when I say we, I say Lisa. So if you have any suggestions or concerns, email me and I'll get those to Lisa so we'll see if we can address those in the, in the draft.
But it does not mean that it's necessarily going to go through.
No, this is just a draft and it'll follow the normal ordinance process with a first and second reading.
I would be interested in knowing if other communities have something similar or if we're being huge pioneers by doing this.
Okay, well, thank you, Julie. Sounds like you're busy.
Have a great night.
Sorry, I'm glad to be here.
Okay, moving on to tax abatement request.
For an elderly freeze recommended by the county.
Julie Lanuel, Brandon Farmers Market, has left the conference.
We have a motion and a second to approve the tax abatement request, elderly request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Who seconded it? Was it Dana? Okay, sorry. I missed it in the hanging up process.
So just a quick question. I'll ask this on behalf of Jim and I. What's the elderly hold?
What was the question?
What's the elderly hold? I'm asking for.
Oh, I think they have certain criteria. I don't know, you can look on the county's website and look it up, but there's certain criteria you'd have to have, and I don't know what that is. It's certain income.
And age.
And age.
Not as age, that.
We'll bring that up tomorrow night.
Yeah, I can grab the sheet for tomorrow.
Okay, moving on, election workers?
This is a list of election workers that I have set for the election and they need to be appointed. I kind of get them and get them all scheduled, but they have to be appointed by the governing body.
Hang on a second.
But motion and a second to approve the election workers as listed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a wage adjustment for utility billing clerk, Doris.
Hope you approve.
But motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Engagement letter with DA Davidson for the Core Phase 2A financing.
They have done the underwriting for our bonds here recently, in the last couple of years. So this would be an engagement letter to get the process started.
I believe that's a very prudent thing to do in light of recent movement of interest.
So hope to get moving on it.
You mean a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion, do it. What is it?
Engagement letter.
Approve the engagement letter with DA Davidson.
A motion and a second to approve the engagement letter with DA Davidson. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Streets, we have a work report there on page 86. Nothing there. Resignation of an employee. Effective.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. A motion and a second to approve the resignation of the employee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Core Phase 2A construction administration contract with HDR.
This is for our Phase 2A project. It is with HDR who also did the design and it's just for under $415,000.
Let me, what was, what was the project bid out at here?
3.9.
3.9. Okay, I gotta do a little math here quick. Okay, roughly 10, 10 and a half. Okay, I'm good, vote.
Vote approved.
Seven.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Phase 2 construction contract with HDR. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just an update on that. We are having a pre-construction meeting this week and then we will start staking and they have already marked some of the utilities out there. We will probably start removing trees in the next couple of weeks. And then after that, it'll, it'll be removing the street. So there'll be quite a bit of construction around here again.
Speaking of construction, the water tower seems to be pretty active.
So Tammy, I had a couple of people ask me already, when, when are the trees going to be starting to come out?
Uh, probably not last week in March, first week of the year.
Okay, have we notified the homeowners? Yeah, they, they've gotten letters and they had their choice of taking, allowing us to take it out or treat it, basically? Oh, just part of the project, my bad, because I'm taking it out.
Actually, we've marked them, letters are going out, so they'll have their choice to either treat or have us remove them in the Boulevard throughout the city.
Okay, so I was driving around, what's, the, the pink ones?
Yep, those are ash.
Those are the ash trees. Okay, they're not part of the project at all.
You got ribbons on them? You do?
Yeah, pink ribbon.
So are we going to have a big picture-taking, something when the bowl goes up on the water tower? Video something?
Yeah, okay, so I do hope to organize that. We don't really have to tag date yet, but we'll put something together. So it'll be a, it will take like five hours, we'll take them all day to actually lift that bowl up there, but hopefully something happens.
Here we go.
You can, you can see the bowl now. It's cool.
So is that just one crane doing that or they got to use multiple?
So it sounds like they have jack, but they put all the way around it to lift it up and then they only let it up a certain amount and then they go around and measure it to make sure it's the same level.
Hmm. Interesting. Yeah, you're going to let us know when that's happening? That'd be awesome. Captain.
Okay. Draft Chapter 1, General Provisions, Engineering Design Standards.
So this is the really easy chapter.
Thank you.
It's only two pages, pretty short and sweet. It's pretty much just taking the City of Sioux Falls name out and replacing it with Brandon. There are 20 chapters and then there are four sections of standard specifications. So I'm hoping to get one chapter in front of you a month. So the first time, it'll be red lines and then that next meeting, then we'll adopt it by resolution.
I'm going to miss that with my term being up.
Dang.
Okay, just kidding. So what?
So if you have any questions or comments about this?
Do we need to pass something here, Brandon?
Not right at the moment.
Okay.
This is just the draft. So if you have any questions or comments or concerns with what's being changed, get ahold of Tammy and then we'll take a look at that. But the next meeting, we'll have a resolution that adopts Chapter 1.
Okay.
Tammy, could you give us the 32nd version of what's, what this is? What's changing or possible?
So for the most part, it's stating that we have design standards and then it kind of goes through the review process. As far as who has jurisdiction and how amendments and revisions will be taken care of, it also talks about the city engineer's authority throughout the process and then, you know, private facilities and relationship to other standards. It's pretty plain Jane.
Look on page 165, Jack, you can see.
Yeah.
Red line.
So of the actual designed standards, is there anything really changing?
So yes and no. A lot of this is based off of the City of Sioux Falls, which obviously the City of Sioux Falls has a lot more city engineers and they can put together this document. They also have different permitting and procedures and plans that need to be submitted. And in the past, we have copied all of City Sioux Falls, but it's very confusing for our developers because we don't have all those processes in place, nor do we have all of those inspection processes. So this is really just kind of taking theirs as a start and then changing it to meet our needs. I, I want to be very careful in the fact that we are neighbors to the City of Sioux Falls and we want to keep things the same as the City of Sioux Falls. So whether our developers working there or working here in Brandon, they know that the standard is about the same. But there are small things about Brandon that. about Brandon that are not in the city of Sioux Falls.
So I think Tammy's doing a really proactive job on this. She's pulled together a committee of developers, builders, um, to discuss these different areas, you know, try to get consensus on things rather than just saying this is the way it is, and I think that that's good consensus building. So it, it's going to take a while to get through the different chapters.
No, I love the idea, and seeing, staying consistent with what Sioux Falls is doing is, yeah, that's very wise. Um, my concern is if we make some change, and it, and it's not consistent with what we're doing now, does it make life harder for us, for you and for Paul? You're going to have, in my, in my opinion, you're going to be very, very careful how you approach some of those areas.
Yeah, but, and we've talked a little bit about it, and now that Andrew's here, he's going to be involved with it as well. Um, one of the things that we don't want to do is just take Sioux Falls, who has a few more staff than we do- Right. -and create additional work for our staff. So we'll take their procedures and revise them so that it fits us. So, you know, we, we may be removing a couple of steps that we don't necessarily do, or think we need to do, or have the staff to do. Um, so we'll take what they do as a blueprint, revise it to meet our needs, and then, uh, work with the developers to make sure everybody's on the same page. But we don't want to just go off on a whole different-
No.
...direction from Sioux Falls. It works pretty well with us borrowing their rules as a guideline.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll model it to fit us.
Sounds to be like you're on the right track. I think that's great. Okay, moving on to water and sewer, Westside Sanitary Sewer Project. Construction administration with DGR.
This is the project that is on the west side of town. Um, this provides sewer to not only pay construction land, but it's also for that sandline area. Um, their construction admin is three hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, mostly DGR engineering.
Same question as before. What's the bid?
Two point, two point seven million.
Eleven point six, Jeff.
Eleven point six.
Yeah. Percent, is that what you're-
Eleven point six.
As long as it stays under, well, under fifteen, but I always prefer under twelve, but, so.
It just made it that.
Yeah.
Brian, are we approving both the construction administration and the purchase agreement?
We want to, it's the same project, so if you want to do it as the same motion, you certainly can.
Tim, I wanted to ask that before.
Uh, I will amend my motion to approve both of those.
And I'll second, too.
We have a, did you, we have a motion to approve the, both parts of this. I don't know if there's any other comments, Tammy, on the purchase agreement with the great bear sand and gravel.
Um, just that one is a hundred and sixty-two thousand. Um, that is because we're buying quite a bit of land there. We're buying fifty feet along that railroad track to put in this warming. Uh, we want to make sure that we own it, and not just the easement, because we are, don't need to put other utilities in there. We get down the line of design, a little bit more on that. Of course, we know Sioux Falls are redundant line there. That would follow the same alignment. So that's that. And then the temporary construction easement is two hundred and three thousand to him. Typically, we don't pay for temporary easements, but there is no cost to him because he had already fertilized the land, and they can use it for rock parking. So we have a little bit of neighbors there.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-three thousand?
About twenty-three thousand an acre?
We brought it down.
And that's fair price?
That's pretty much what he paid for it.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a motion and a-
One, one, one quick question, Joe.
Yes.
So this is fifty feet off of the railroad right away? Is that what you're talking there?
So is it joint to the railroad railway?
Right. Fifty, five zero. Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Do you need an easement with the HE and E as well?
We have a permit with them.
Oh, you do? Okay.
But we don't have an easement for the alignment. We have a permit for, for the utilities underneath the railroad to the north side. So if they develop on the north side, I mean, that's-
Yeah. But we're running parallel, not perpendicular here, so. Okay. You won't need a construction easement being that close? Check with Clark first, so, if you would.
He's aware of the project, and that's why we're buying fifty feet here, but then we also have sixty feet in term, uh, payroll as well, but it's for easement.
Okay.
We have a hundred and ten feet to put in this warming.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the Westside Sanitary Sewer Project, items A and B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water Tower Project, we have a pay application, and a plaque. Anything further to say on the plaque? What's your thoughts were on that, Tim?
Um, most of the construction projects in this site have a plaque. I'm very interested in all of them, but we did put in there the example of what Harrisburg put in there, uh, waste water treatment facility. So I'd like to mimic something like this, and it started with names on there. I would recommend that we put the names of council and mayor on there of what the project would commit. So there'd be a plaque here and at the water treatment plant. I'll make a motion, too.
And I'll second.
We have a motion.
Vote.
Vote.
So we're approving both the pay application and the plaque, correct? We have a motion and a second to approve the Water Tower Project A and B. Any questions?
And then Tammy, you'll kind of follow the same thing, right, for city administration, and then, just kind of like how they have it, right? Yep.
I think it's good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, French Creek Generator Quote. Raleigh spoke to this.
Yeah, this is for the, moving of the French Creek Lift Station up there, and the, where they're developing the I-90 Plaza area. Um, I haven't got anything back from him, but this quote he gave me was pretty firm for the thirty-one thousand. Uh, this is just going to be, because right now there is no backup generator for the lift station, being that was temporary twenty years ago. Now it's becoming permanent, so I'd like to get a generator set on site. Most of the other lift stations in town do have them now, so all the booster stations for the water have them. So when he gets back from his vacation to Mexico, I guess I want to try and get it ordered, because it could take up till, I think is, he said the earliest would probably be August, latest would probably be looking at November. That's getting pretty late in the year, so.
A motion and a second to approve the generator quote. Any other questions?
Does that just kind of sit out there then, Raleigh? What do you, is it just there?
It's, yeah, it sits on site. It's, uh, if you happen to go through the intersection of Redwood and Split Rock up there, you'll notice by the Vogel Motors, there's a gray, big gray, looks like a machine sitting there right next to the lift station, similar to what this one is. It's the same brand and everything. Um, but yeah, it just sits on site, doesn't move.
Just in case.
Yep, never know.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the French Creek Generator Quote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have one request on the, Dana has on new business?
Yes. Um, at one point, we had a mention at one of our meetings about possibly having our P and Z meetings be published on our web, um, and I think several of us thought that was a good idea. There was a gal, a resident, that had, um, had some questions about that as well at the P and Z meeting Thursday, so I wanted to just circle back to it, and I guess, uh, see if there was interest in that, and make the request that we, we put them up like we do council meetings with YouTube links that wouldn't take a lot of, um, storage for our web. Uh, I think it'd be great for transparency, and, and residents would be able to get history on topics they're interested in and follow along. Um, I think it's safer, too, to not be having flash drives passed back and forth, probably.
Yeah.
Yes, for me.
Is that something, do we need to make a motion on, Brian, or?
If you can. It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Can we just give that direction, or do you need it to be in the agenda?
We'll take a look at it. Um, I know we talked at P and Z about possibly starting to record video of the P and Z meetings as well. So we can take a look and see what we need to do to get that done.
Personally, I think it'd be a good idea, too.
Okay, we'll have, uh, staff do that. Uh, executive session necessary?
Don't need any.
If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for coming.